Commissioner's meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is July the 8th, 2020. The time is nine o'clock a.m. I would ask if Ms. Kara would mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Nations of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Are we not hooking up the phone?
I suppose we should probably, yeah.
Everything right?
Everything but the phone. Sorry, I forgot.
Who is it? Ah, Pledge of Allegiance, or is it I? I don't know.
I pledge.
It's I?
No, ah.
Ah. It's ah.
Oh.
Ah, Pledge of Allegiance.
I didn't get what you was saying.
To the flag.
Not for sake, because we're being recorded.
Okay, that's why I thought I could shoot my mouth off and not have to suffer for it. So while we're doing that, now the Clerk's Board, would you please call the room?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
I wasn't there.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Kemper, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. We're getting the phones fired up here for teleconference, so we'll give folks just a minute to get called in. Vernon or Alex, are you on?
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Good, good. I think we are fired up and running. Do you have a record of the number of people on the call?
At present, we have four excluding myself and the Commissioner Room itself.
Okay, good. So we'll move ahead with audience introductions if you've called in. Well, let's go through introductions here in the room so everybody knows who's in the Commissioner Room. So Kara.
Kara Evans, B O C C Admin Assistant.
Thank you. So introduce yourself if you're on the phone, please.
In London, High Altitude Garden Club.
Thank you.
Elaine Chapinon, High Altitude Garden Club.
Thank you.
Deb Adams, Custer County Tourism.
All right, thank you.
Got one more.
Should have one more. All right, we'll move on, thank you, good morning, welcome. Say again?
Deb Adams, Public County Tourism.
Yes.
Barbara Molden, High Altitude Garden Club.
Who was that one?
Barbara Molden.
Can you say your name again, please?
Barbara Molden.
Okay. Yeah, I would ask you to mute your phones. Go ahead.
Detective Power, Public Health.
And I would ask that you mute your phones until we get to public comment or the agenda item that you may be on the call about, thank you. Okay, any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
No, none for me.
None, sir.
Okay, I've got one. I went off the rails yesterday, obviously, because I didn't realize that consideration of signing the School Resource Officer I G A was on today's agenda. So I would move to strike the second item, agenda item under new business, consideration of signing the School Resource Officer I G A.
Just a second. It's on twice?
It was on, we did it yesterday.
Yeah, right, okay.
And it wasn't on the agenda yesterday.
Yeah, I'll second.
Been moving second to strike the second agenda item under new business, consideration of signing the School Resource Officer I G A, discussion. Yeah, I talked to Kelly this morning, she said, you know, I thought that was on an agenda and I don't know, I just didn't look ahead, so we dealt with it during Commissioner Items yesterday and I, I'm sure there's going to be exceptions, but I'm not real comfortable for us voting on things during Commissioner Items unless it's kind of in the case of emergency. I don't know how you gentlemen feel about that, but we should be posted notice and the sunshine law comes into effect and so on and so forth, so. Anyway, really doesn't have anything to do with this, so we'll move on. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote on the favor of striking the second item under new business. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Give me just a second here. Do we have somebody else join us? Okay. And then, Kelly, I guess a question for you, let me. So we had moved the Garden Club from yesterday to today.
Right.
I do not see it on here.
It's online.
It's on, it's on line.
Oh, you know what, sorry.
Through the wrong one way.
Through the wrong one away, I'll bet.
Is the third one now? Well, the sec, is it, yeah.
Yeah, the third now, okay, so I'll. All right. Just get things corrected here. Yeah, I had my agenda that I printed out yesterday, and you gave me one, you know, through the wrong one way. And no minutes to approve, so we will move on. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Kanda, would you like to begin?
Not a lot, other than a few phone calls since yesterday. It's only been, like, ten hours. But anyway, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, Commissioner Prince?
Thanks, sir. I attended the Recovery Team Meeting that we had yesterday afternoon. And I'd like to bring up under Commissioner Items, we have the mid-month meeting scheduled in Wetmore. And considering the coronavirus and restrictions, we're doing our meetings live-streamed and on phone. And I think that would create a significant hardship to try and recreate that down at Wetmore. So while I really respect the folks down there, I'd want them to be party to our meetings, I would recommend that we suspend meetings outside of the Commissioner Room for anybody, that will include the airport or San Isabel, until such time as we feel the safety of the citizens would not be compromised by moving around and having a room full of folks, so.
So you're adding that, we already said we're not going to do Wetmore this month, so you're making it broader.
I'm thinking we should make it broader, and we ought to stay with this format that we have now until such time as we can have folks be here. So that we can use the phone systems, and we can use the live-streaming, and we have the microphone set up in this room. It just seems to make sense to me that we could get the most people involved. The method we're doing it now as opposed to moving the meetings around.
What's the group's play, do you want to vote on this, or do it by consent?
Consent by, by.
So if there are no objections, then it's the consent of the board that we will continue the format of our meetings, which is the Commissioner's, Clerk, Assistant, and the Attorney attend the meetings live. And we will continue to live-stream those meetings and teleconference the meetings. We can wear a mask anywhere, so it really has to do with social distancing, until the Commissioner determines social distancing is no longer necessary. So let the record reflect that.
Okay, let me comment too on that, because it brings up a good point. You mentioned social dis, we could wear the mask, and if you go into more volume or more, anywhere. That came up yesterday, a discussion on how would we do better in a bigger room? And we could have a meeting in a bigger room to get more people, even social distancing. I don't want to talk about it today, but it might be an agenda item we ought to consider maybe next meeting. That was a reason after that, just to open up our ability to get more people to participate, because this is a lousy connection.
I would concur with you, Bill, if we could find a venue that would be safe and meet the requirements coming down from the state for distancing.
Or our own requirements, it might be stiffer, however we do.
Correct, I'm agreed with you.
Okay, anything else, sir, under Commissioner Report?
Nothing else, sir.
So I'm going to, I've got a few things. I'm going to read a letter that was sent to us dated June 26th, I got it yesterday. And it is from the West Custer County Hospital District. Dear Custer County B O C C, in response to your letter on May 20th, we look forward to meeting with you in a workshop format. We have received an adequate number of responses from the East Custer County Survey and are eager to share the results with you and consider next steps to be taken. Please let us know a couple of dates and locations that would be convenient for you. Sincerely, Bob Tobin, West Custer County Hospital District Board Chair. So I think we should pick a couple of dates and locations that would work for us, and I will convey that back to Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that maybe after the July 15th B O C C meeting, we have the workshop by maybe one o'clock on the 15th of July.
Okay. I know there was some talk at one time about us having this workshop in Wetmore. I don't know if we want to do an afternoon meeting, if we want to do it down there, or should we just meet with the clinic up here and then if we meet again, involve the folks at Wetmore?
My recommendation would be, I think the folks at Wetmore would have much more opportunity to be part of the discussion, part of the workshop, if we did it here with the phones and the video, because we'd have to limit the amount of people in the room in Wetmore. And I would hate to exclude any individuals, but if we did it by phone, everybody could be on it who chose to be on it, so. I still go a couple of miles here, I think we'd need a little people.
Folks on the phone, could you mute your phones, please?
Mute them means mute them, not lower the volume.
Thank you. Yeah, to Commissioner Kanda's point, you know, I guess we wouldn't have to have it right here. I think that's why they said a location, if we feel like we need to have them somewhere else.
We could consider that, you know, could have in a school gym, or at the saddle club, or bigger buildings with a lot more people. And I think we had the phone set up. We had the phone set, did the phone work in Wetmore, thought it did. But that's too small a room.
Yeah, I, I don't think the saddle club would be an alternative, because I think the fair is going to have activities up in the saddle club building on that day. I wouldn't mind meeting over in the Walter Burke's room at the school.
Yeah, that'd be good, or even the old gym.
Kelly, you have thoughts about that?
What about the courtroom?
Yeah, depends, if the entire board shows up, I'm not sure it would be big enough, but it might.
They all spread out.
Yeah, we could sit in bleachers, it would be a little easier.
Lane Hall, too, that's a pretty good-sized room.
Yeah, Vernon, are you on?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, we're discussing maybe having a workshop the mid-month. And we're talking about the possibility of having it somewhere else and then still being able to live-stream or have teleconference capabilities. Any input on the whole tele, or the live-stream thing?
Well, live-stream would be kind of difficult to move the camera system, but we could do that given enough advance notice and the setup time to make certain everything functioned right. The teleconferencing is fairly versatile, as long as we have a working phone line or a cellphone with good reception.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have live-stream if we've got this. It's easier to get the phone service to everybody. If you're clearly here, this live-stream doesn't necessarily come across very clear either.
And you usually don't live-stream your workshops anyway.
I was going to say it's a workshop, so they're not live-streaming either, so maybe my question, Vernon, was a moot point, and.
No, we can do the, we can do the workshop with a conference call pretty easily, if that's what you guys would like.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, and then the other thought is typically in a workshop format, there's not a ton of interaction with the public. It's a workshop for us. So, yeah, I think maybe if the courtroom is available, I would support that.
Try it.
Okay, dates? Are you good with 15th?
After the Commissioner's meeting?
Yeah, one o'clock in the afternoon.
On birthday, I move the, move it to the 16th, no, I'm kidding. It is my birthday.
What is?
The 15th, so I want a cake in between the two days.
We should celebrate. Interesting birthdays come.
The 16th is a court day, I mean, Thursday is when they do court, it may not be available.
We don't need to, 15th's fine.
Kara, would you mind asking Court Clerk if the 15th would be available in the afternoon, on Wednesday, the 15th?
Sure will.
Thank you. Alternate date, gentlemen?
17?
Yeah, we have a 911 meeting on the one o'clock on Thursday, the 17th. Probably not going to be a good day, we're right in the middle of the fair and rodeo.
Yeah, that's exactly the rodeo weekend, so. Monday's out.
Monday, the.
13th. We got it later.
What about the 20th? We have a C E S meeting on Tuesday, so. Second alternate date, Monday, the 20th?
That'd be fine.
I've got a dark skies meeting that afternoon.
Okay, what time does that start?
3:30.
We should be done, if you want to do back, back.
All you need to do is make a deadline immediately.
Yeah, it's funny, starting at one is a routine.
That's correct, one o'clock.
Okay.
So Ms. Kara said that the Court Clerk okayed the use of the courtroom on the 15th at one o'clock for a clinic workshop. If it's all right, gentlemen, I will reach out to Mr. Tobin, and I'll give him both of those dates with a preference on the 15th.
What was the other date?
20th. And I would assume probably the courtroom would be available on the 20th, too, but I would guess maybe we could make that 15th work, so. If we have to go back and see about the court availability, courtroom availability on the 20th, we'll follow up with that. Thank you. So the other thing I wanted to bring up, gentlemen, was John Evert called me last week. As you may recall, he was the person who eradicated the prairie dogs on our Justice Center property. And they are going to do another eradication east across the road on that property where they're going to build a new subdivision, sorry. Housing, I don't know if subdivision's the correct term.
When?
So he wanted to know if we'd be interested in him reapplying his eradication process to the Justice Center land. He said it wouldn't be near as expensive, he said, I think last time it was almost $3,000. He estimated this year, or this go-around, it would probably be a thousand bucks.
When?
When would he do it? They're scheduled soon to do the property across the road.
The only reason I'm asking is just for time's sake. Does this need to be voted on, if we do, we'll put on the agenda next time?
No, it's under $5,000. Well, yeah, I think we should vote on it eventually, but I just need to let him know if we're interested or not. And if so, then I would ask him to submit a formal bid.
Go ahead, Jay.
Thanks, sir. I, I don't see the necessity for it. I mean, it's not like the prairie dogs are interfering with any of the county operations or business that I'm aware of. At this time, I mean, when we start working closer with it, I agree with you, Bill. So I, I'm not sure we really need to spend $1,000 to eradicate a pest, that's not a pest at this point.
Okay. If they were not going to treat on the east side, then I would be all in favor, because we know what would happen the minute they start moving equipment and they're digging, what are those prairie dogs going to do? They're going to go west.
Green grass somewhere else.
And park on our place, so. But he indicated to me there wasn't a lot of prairie dogs on that Justice Center land. I think if they eradicate them on the west side, I have a tendency to agree, I don't think they're a huge issue. But I told him I would bring it before the board. So what would you like me to do?
I think we could just forget it. Wait, I'm not in favor of spending the money.
All right, that's fine. If I consent, then, gentlemen, if it's all right, I will convey that message to you.
Ma'am, thank you.
Okay, that's all I had. I had a couple of phone calls last night as well. I don't know that it's worth going into, because I'm not sure I can speak factually, so I think we'll just wait and see. There was some concern about an activity. I guess I can bring it up, because it was actually, I think, addressed to us as well, about allowing an activity at Three Peaks Ranch this weekend. And I spoke with Jackie and Vic Barnes about that. I don't know that we even have the authority to do that, we haven't signed a special use permit to begin with.
Well, I thought we left it with, that's an issue for the planning, or the zoning issue, and let them handle that. And that's why we said to give it, all I got from Jackie was, here's an app, why I. Let them deal with it, and let's see what comes back. We don't need to worry about it right now, I don't think.
I agree, I mean, I, I, I think we ought to let the Planning Committee to decide how they want to handle it. We give them the responsibility, let's give them the authority to make that decision.
Yeah, I agree, and I think even more to the point, I think that's their director's job. They're probably not going to meet to make those kind of decisions, I think that's on Jackie's table, but we'll see. So I just didn't, I told them both, I didn't feel that was a Commissioner thing at this point.
You said it yesterday. I agree.
So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. That's all I have. Anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner?
Not for me.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on. I have nothing to report for Upper Ark, other than obviously the meeting is this Thursday at one o'clock, so.
And you're doing those virtually, right?
I am, yes. As are some board members, there are some board members in attendance live. And I probably should throw this out, because it got, maybe I said this, I don't remember. It got to be a little point of contention in the last. Oh, we're getting burnt, it's going to burn.
Well, he stole it.
Counselor?
I only needed to say I have nothing to report.
And nobody could hear it.
That's right, nobody could hear it anyway.
I'll put it back now.
No, no, don't do it now, you keep that, we got another one up here.
So I bring this up just because it did kind of become a point of contention and discussion at the last Upper Ark meeting. The Conservancy District hired a new secretary. And so it was interesting to sit there, because they were introducing her, and a lot of these board members were kind of had this.
When did that happen, look?
When did that happen? Well, it happens to be their, whatever Terry Schangit is, I forget his formal title, it happened to be his daughter. And so right away.
And these director sources.
Saying, hey, they weren't going to make a big deal about her. But one of the directors said, I believe we need to, hold on to these mics. I believe we need to take a hard, hard, long look at our hiring policy. Apparently this all happened behind closed doors, and the directors didn't know anything about it, and they weren't very happy, but. So anyway, Terry's daughter's now the board secretary, so. We'll see how that goes. Yeah, they got into a heated discussion about that. Okay, so we'll move on. I wonder if the attorney has anything to report today?
He does have a microphone.
Nothing to report today.
Okay, you, you don't have to turn your mic on, but if you want to have your.
Turn it on, turn it on again.
It was on.
Oh, was it on, okay. And normally we don't stand during our report, but if you choose to do that, sir, it is entirely.
You walk out.
Our Planning and Zoning Director, who has a question?
Oh, so she's interrupting the.
I'm talking to her out here, and listening with one ear and.
All right. Oh, appreciate that. Oh, gosh, I got to figure out, we're right on.
Oh, I've been waiting for the next item.
Well, so we have a little issue. I've apparently been going a little overboard with asking our Administrative Assistant if she has anything to bring before the board. She never said this to me, by the way. Maybe you could just say, is there anything from the Administrative Assistant, and let it go at that? It's not my nature. So before I ask if there's anything from the Administrative Assistant, I would just like to inform you, the board, the county, pretty much the United States of America, that today is Kara's birthday. So I don't think we're going to sing Happy Birthday, but certainly we can wish her a happy birthday, can't we? Well, I just, because you don't spend as much time around her as I do, and she can get hateful.
I'm going to pay for this as it is, but if she sang, it would be over the top.
Happy Birthday, kiddo. Thank you for all you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
That being said, the next item on the business agenda is the Administrative Item, Assistant Items, Ms. Kara, anything?
I'm good, thank you very much.
You are entirely welcome. We're going to live-stream the rest of the day, so we'll keep the record of what happens in retaliation for that. Okay, public comment? If you are on the phone and you want to comment on anything that's not on the agenda that will be considered later, now would be the appropriate time to do that. Staff reports? Thank you. Okay, if there's no public comments, we'll move on to staff reports. First staff report is the airport. Running a little behind according to our estimated times. Kara, I can't see around the corner, is anybody out there?
No, just Meredith.
Any airport guys out there?
No.
Okay, all right, well, we'll move on.
See if he's on board, maybe he called in.
Is there anybody from the airport on the phone? Okay, so we'll move on, Office of Emergency Management.
That's her.
Ms. Meredith?
Hello.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how is everyone?
Doing fine, thank you, thanks for being here, we're well ratcheted, we're right on time for yours.
She's six feet away from you, though, right now.
We're 15 feet apart, or 15 minutes late for airport, but we're right on time for yours.
You're going to need a microphone, I don't, here's one here.
Thanks, okay, this is fun.
All right, good, well, welcome, good morning.
Hi, before, I realized I didn't give my timesheet to be signed.
Oh, okay.
All of these. So there's that one, if you want to pass it. I have copies of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's an extra one in there if you need it.
There you go.
I wasn't sure.
And did you send it, did you email it?
I didn't, but I can.
I don't think I.
There's not an original, doesn't matter which one these, we sign.
I have one that I sign, I think Jay has that, you can sign that, but, here one.
So we'll just take a second here.
May I make a comment?
Certainly, go ahead, sir.
I'm so sorry you're leaving us, but I want you to know how proud I am, and I think the whole county is, of this phenomenal promotion you got. I think it's well deserved. And while it's not the best thing for the county, it's wonderful for the state, it's wonderful for you. So I just want to say congratulations.
I appreciate you.
Okay, I would move we approve the timesheet for 210 hours.
I'll second it.
We move to second it to approve the timesheet discussion.
I think there's 20 minutes on here that you're pushing.
Probably.
Here, then, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Did you say 210?
210, yes, ma'am.
Thanks, apologies for it not being in the... Caught it, hold on.
Yeah, all right. What else, kiddo?
Really, just other than the COVID response with Alyssa, the RFP that we did for the Corneverde Fuel Litigation Project is in the newspaper, is going to be in the newspaper this week. And then we will have it in... I think it's on. There's a green light. So it'll be in the newspaper in run two weeks as the purchasing policy. And then go forward in that. Guinevere Nelson, our extension agent, has been helping me with it and agreed to continue the project after I leave.
Wow, that's good sweet.
So she has really good project management skill, experience, so she'll be doing that, which is really awesome.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, so we don't have to have that policy of cracks. I finished the Q2 report for the MPG grant.
Yes.
So because that's going to be due in the time that I'm gone. So I'm getting it ready now. I already have the... There's two sets of that, so the narrative...
Yeah, the narrative is done, right?
Yeah, yes.
We signed that.
No, so that... What was signed a couple of meetings ago was for the grant of 2020. So it's that lag. And so I'm still sending my reports, even though we don't have the official documents yet. And then it'll be retroactively reimbursed to the budget. And so I'll have it... It's basically what was... Everything was accomplished.
So when is it due to sign?
The 10th. And then the claims, which is the budget side of it, is due, you know, a week after that. I think it's the 20th, that week of the 20th. So I'll have it done before.
Yeah, I spoke to Christie Coleman, if I may, last night. And we talked about that, that both the narrative and the financial, the fiscal side is two different documents, and those are going to need to be signed. She was confident that you would be able to get those to us. And she said the other thing, I'll just throw this out real quick, that... She said, believe me, I will help you so that you guys don't miss any deadlines after the 16th. That's not an issue. Most of that comes across my desk. I will make sure that we're on good, solid ground with that. But she said, yeah, you need to be aware, there's two documents, the narrative and the financial piece. So thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely. I put in the reimbursement for the Homeland Security Grant. The 2017 grant was still open for some VIPS funding for the posse. And so some cones, flares, a new projector, equipment for that projector was all within that grant. So it was in 2017 that we had to close out before, or that money would go away. So I sent in the reimbursement yesterday to make sure it was closed because it had to be sent in before the end of July, or the money would go completely away. So got that spread away. So I've been gathering the COVID-19 expenses that each county department has been compiling. And I have an Excel sheet already tracking those expenses. Tom and I, I think Jay, you're on the meeting too. Kind of, I briefly brought it up in the Economic Recovery Task Force meeting yesterday, but I wasn't sure you want me to send that to you? In general?
Yeah, I would guess, probably.
Well, to who, sorry? To that... So after I leave on the 16th?
Who's going to maintain that, is my question.
Yeah, I would say, why don't you send it to the chairman?
Okay.
And then we'll... Kara and I will archive that at least, and I'll share it with the country.
Okay, I can hear that.
Why don't you send it to me, too? Because that's my area. So send me what you got. I'm going to talk to Christie as well.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Upcoming, I've been doing the program status report for the next director so that they know where things have left off and what to really prioritize in the start of working with other departments to make sure that nothing possibly cracks and some things are together. Been working. For example, one of those things is the Everbridge system. So Alex Anderson and I are the ones that can do a public notification to everyone of emergency. And I want to make sure there's a second at least for him, so he's not the only one with that. So we're working with Shane and trying to find a couple of different people within the county that would be good people to do that. And then that's really it.
I have a quick question. They tuned our radios the other day. My radio's over there still somewhere.
Okay, I can...
And they said they can't...
I thought it was right there.
Oh, you got it there. And they can't... And they're obsolete, apparently.
Yeah, the 3000s.
So what do we... What's the next step?
There would have to be another purchasing of the radios, which we can go down that road of that somebody...
And how many of us, just the three of us, have been... The old ones or the more?
The 3000s, I think I had one of the 3000s. Roden Bridge might have had some 3000s. And there's a few different...
Public health?
Public health did, yeah.
So we got to round up, see how many we got.
Yeah.
Do that as a part of the budget next year, probably.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay. Anything else, force, ma'am?
Just kind of a reminder, even if there's social distancing happening, masks are still recommended. Those two together is what prevents the spread or limits the spread. Even if there was six feet distance, the mask really makes that more effective.
Any update on the number of people tested yesterday?
I believe we had 40, at least 40 people tested yesterday. That included... So Ace Hardware agreed to have all their staff tested, which was awesome. And then a few others in that day.
How long does it take to do the test over there?
The test itself doesn't take very long.
Five minutes or something?
Yeah, if there's a wait. But that's why they do appointments, that's it, so...
And it is free.
Yeah, it is free.
State next, so everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah, we put that in all of our messaging, that it's a free test.
And that was a good release, finally.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to publicly say, while we're on the topic, very proud of Valley Ace Hardware and how they've handled their exposure out there. I commend Paul Winkie and Jeremy Handy as their managers, just doing a great job with that, so... Yeah, so we've really almost doubled our test cases over... We were at 43, I think, before that, 42. And if they tested 40 yesterday, I mean, that's pretty intense, so...
Any results, other than negative?
No, it's going to take about 72 hours to get those results. Part of that is, we know... We are trying to look forward and get things prepared for increased testing capabilities in two weeks from the activities that happened this weekend or last weekend, and trying to ramp up what we're capable of doing. And so looking at regional partners, or if that doesn't work, then go to the state for that. We're going to order more tests and more PPE and be prepared for that so that we're not scrambling in two and a half weeks. We're going to have to possibly test a lot of folks. Yeah, that's really...
All right. Obviously, you have submitted a letter of resignation formally to the commissioners. We've received that. What is the group's pleasure? Let's deal with that while we're here.
We got to get a notice on the street, as soon as possible. You're gone the next week, right?
On the 16th, if I mistake.
That's the last agenda I am under.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, sorry. Yeah.
I would move that we reluctantly accept Meredith Nichols' letter of resignation.
I'll second the motion. We move to second it to accept the letter of resignation from Meredith Nichols, Office of Emergency Management manager. Discussion? Yeah, you know, I just echo what Commissioner Prince said. I'm proud of you for the opportunity that's been placed in front of you and certainly will miss you. Appreciate the job that you've done, but I'm sure that this will be a great move career-wise for you, and I'm excited about your prospects in the future. I spoke with Christie about that some last night. She's very excited as well. And I will just say, Christie indicated there were 86 applicants for that position. So very proud of Meredith to come out at the top of that heap. I think that speaks volumes to your education and your experience and your personality. So congratulations on that.
Yeah, I told her that when she called. Congratulations on the big step.
Where will you be, Colorado's first?
I will actually be able to work from home and travel. So I'll still be here for at least nine months or so and kind of fill where I'm traveling more to kind of go from there.
So another conversation I had with Christie, and I want to bring it up here because it involves you. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but will you work on a vacancy announcement? We've talked about that later, but Christie said she would be more than happy to assist, too, so...
Yeah, definitely. There's a lot of avenues that we can send it to, the management around Colorado, so...
Good.
It's right in front of me.
Okay. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote all in favor of accepting letter of resignation. Say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Your letter has been officially accepted, and go with God's grace, my girl.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunities. It's been a great couple of years.
We're proud of you very much. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, next, staff report, public health.
Phones.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Tom, this one really should be the board issue. Public, and it's got PHN, which that's not the name, it's Public Health Director. It should be reporting to the Board of Health, not to the Board of Council officials.
I was going to ask about that, too. Since she sent that email out, do you want me to take it off of staff?
Yes, it needs to be in the Board of Health.
Yeah, I mean, that's just historically has been one of the staff reports she's reported to us since I've been on the board. So I think it was just an oversight that it was left on there, so... Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. We just transfer that over to Board of Health. Technically, it's on the agenda. We kind of missed that for amending the agenda.
Yeah, we should have done.
By consent, gentlemen, are you all right with moving that to Board of Health?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Spoke to the treasurer. She does not have a report. They're still waiting, or were as of yesterday. Kelly's still waiting on a final document.
Did you skip finance on purpose?
No, not on purpose, I didn't.
Well, maybe Donna's in the hall here.
I've got three lines of notes here under it and blew right by it. Good morning.
Morning.
How are you? So human resource, finance, report. Yeah, so we've got a... I know one of the big things is just a ton of handwritten's. Gentlemen, I believe you had a chance to look those over, but we'll deal with it whenever we get to it. So the floor is yours, Miss Dawn.
I brought that list for signatures.
You're supposed to sit up there. Sit back there.
I brought the list of handwritten's for signatures to put in my book. And then I brought the posting for the OEM job. Made copies so you guys could look at it and let me know what you...
Okay.
What your pleasure is.
Yeah, that's the last thing on our agenda today, to look at the posting for OEM.
And so, and that's all I've got.
So the handwritten's this month, I bring it up because it's a little unusual, total $180,792.81. 187.9281. And the reason for the unusually large amount of handwritten checks, we had $130,900 for lease purchases for Roden Bridge water trucks. I don't know how many vehicles the sheriff's lease purchase was. Was 17,000?
14, 17.
14?
And that was two vehicles.
Two, okay. I just didn't look. And then 16,000 and some change on the waterline projects. So normally, those handwritten's run 30, 40, 50,000, but this year, or this month, they're 180, so I thought I'd just throw that out. Also, it was nice to see the 2,000 and some dollars times 13 for the kids' council. They gave out their 25,500. Oh, I think that was for a food.
And you know, they didn't have to be handwritten, but it was nice for...
Yeah, I get their money right away. So appreciate you doing that, Dawn, and that was great, so... So do we need a motion? Kara, would you kind of... Do we need a motion for approving the handwritten's?
We approve the handwritten vouchers that Donna brought in. I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the handwritten's. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Will they be approved?
And I will leave you these. And I thought I could get it posted in our paper, the 16th and the 23rd of July, and possibly close it on the 27th. But that's still whatever you guys... I mean, if we're going to change a lot of things, then that might not be possible, or if it's ready to go, but to let me know.
So the first opportunity would be this, not Thursday, a week after Thursday?
Because today's, I don't think...
Actually, I checked with the Tribune, and if we get it in before noon, you can.
Today, okay, so if you guys let me know...
On Wednesday, you can do that. A press release, especially this, possibly. We got a couple of hours.
No pressure.
And I'll call them back.
Okay, well, if you'll leave those with us, hopefully. Do you want to come back when we get to that on the agenda, or...
You can give me a message, or yeah, whichever way. It's not been that long that it was still, so I don't know what changes. You know, the hours, salary, exams, you know, those are all things. I think the job description's strong.
This will be used before?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just make a note here, and we may holler at you if you're available to come back over. If not, if we have questions or something, we can forward this to you. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thanks for all your work over there.
Thanks, Dawn.
So as I started to indicate earlier, the treasurer's report was hung up for some... For a report that they had not received yet. So she said she would forward that to us when that was done. So we do not have a treasurer's report today. And Jackie Hobbie, Planning and Zoning, I believe she sent a request to all of us asking if we could postpone her report until July 15th because she wanted to include the latest planning and zoning report from their meeting yesterday. So, I said I don't see a problem with that, so.
Fine.
With that, we will move on. Any unfinished? Any unfinished business, gentlemen? We'll move on.
Somebody's not muted out there, clearing their throat just to know who you are.
Yeah, we'd ask that you mute your phones if you can, please. So, under New Business, first item is consideration of approval of the Tourism Board logo. I believe, gentlemen, you should have that in your board packet. So, yes, Commissioner.
Well, just to open the discussion, I'll move that we accept the Tourism Board logo. I'm looking at it, it says Wet Mountain Valley.
Sir, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Moving to second it to accept the Tourism Board's logo discussion, Commissioners?
Check, check.
I looked at it, we got it sent to us several weeks ago, and they had brought this up before. I don't know, we've got two copies, ones with a dark sky and others with a lighter sky. Are we debating that change?
May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead. Whoa, wait a minute, we haven't, we haven't, I got, we haven't voted yet, we haven't got it officially.
We'll get to public comment here in just a second, thank you. So, Commissioner Prince, you've kind of been involved in attending these tourism.
I have, sir, I just want to bring you up to speed on where we are. This has been an extended process. I have sat through most of the discussions, of course, not being a party to any voting or anything, because that's not my role. I think the Tourism Board did an outstanding job. They were presented with multiple original versions of a logo. The Board rejected it because they didn't feel it really reflected Custer County. The question came up whether Wet Mountain Valley really is Custer County, and should it say Custer County? The Board, and I'll let Ms. Adams talk about that in just a minute, but I believe the Board, if I remember correctly, said we're really known as the Wet Mountain Valley, and part of Custer County is Wet Mountain Valley, so I, I'd never objected when they were doing the Wet Mountain Valley part of that, and said I think that's wrong. Overall, I think they handled their business extremely well, and I'm very appreciative of what they did, and I, I liked the logo and the final voted-on version.
Do you know, and if not, I'm sure I can get the answer later, did Vista Works copyright this? Do you know about that?
I believe any original work, whether you actually copyrighted it or not, is automatically copyrighted. So, it is copyrighted automatically since it's original work.
Original work by Vista Works or copyrighted to the Tourism Board?
It's the Tourism Board, they just paid for Vista Works to do this.
That's right.
Tourism Board owns it.
Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Public comment? Go ahead, Ms. Adams.
I also sent you a style guide. So, Bill mentioned that one particular logo was sent, and then another one. In the style guide are all the variations of the logo, black and white color, saying Wet Mountain Valley, saying W M V. So, that style guide is what we will go forward with, that depending upon the way we use the logo, will determine what version we use. When we make stickers, are we going to go with color or black and white? So, we're not stuck with one very specific logo, but we have different things to work with. And I just want to bring to your attention as far as the design, the reason we didn't go with Custer County is because there were six Custer Counties in the United States. And as, as was mentioned in the presentation that was sent to you, no one travels to go to a particular county. The reason the Wet Mountain Valley stands out is because it's an actual place. And even though it says, well, Wet Mountain Valley, the Tourism Board will of course promote everything in the valley, including San Isabella Lake, but as far as our brand, the Wet Mountain Valley is what we would like to become known for. Also, the mountains that are in the logo, there are many, many logos with mountains and stars, very prolific in Colorado. So, we wanted to make ours stand out a little bit. Those mountains that are in the logo are Rito Alto and Spread Eagle. And then the reason for the shooting star was that no other logo has a shooting star, and the specialness of the shooting star is that whenever anyone sees one, whether you're a child or whether you're a grown-up, no matter your political affiliation, your religious affiliation, everyone gets excited about a shooting star. And so, we wanted that excitement in the logo. And it really did go back and forth a lot to design something that all seven Tourism Board members would be proud to share with the community. And so, this is, this is the final work that we came up with, and we are certainly hoping that the B O C C, as well as most of the community, will embrace this new brand that we want to have active for at least the next decade.
Thank you. Other public comment? Further public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the logo, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Logo's been approved, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job, Tourism.
Good work.
Thank you.
Next item of business on the agenda, consideration of the letter intent for the Rosita Broadband Tower site. We've been provided a copy of that letter of intent, gentlemen. Brooks' pleasure. Can you mute your phones, please?
Debbie, I think it's your phone.
I would move that we approve and sign the letter of intent for the Rosita Broadband Tower site, which is on county property.
I'll say it.
Moving to second it to approve and sign the letter of intent on behalf of the county, in this case, it happens to be to the county for a broadband tower site on the parcel described in the document, which is county-owned property, basically on the northeast side. Discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, as far as I'm aware, I'm listening through.
On behalf of the county.
Hey, Dawn. Vernon?
Yes, sir, somebody else logged in, I've muted everybody now except for, except for you and me.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll have public comment here, but I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I, I've sat through most of the tower meetings, understanding, of course, that the Rosita Tower location is the only one that's on county property. I understand that we're very close to having all six tower locations under an agreement. My only concern is, I just want to verify and make sure that the neighbors around the proposed tower site will have an opportunity to voice their concerns, discussions, or approvals of the site on the county property. I know they're doing it on the others, I just want to make sure the county property's not going to be handled in a different way than you.
Yeah, it's a great point. Certainly, it will go through the special use hearings at the rest of the properties, well, but it's a great point.
Yeah, that's a very good point, it will go through the hearings, thank you.
Further discussion? Yeah, I guess I just want to. Thank you, sir. I just want to bring up for public knowledge that there were some other sites that Site Selection Consultants Company looked at, Rosita, all of them had some drawbacks, as we know. This one has a drawback, in my opinion, and we're not going to get a lot of great cell or internet coverage going to the southwest because of the topography of that land, but I do believe this is probably the best option that's out there on the table right now, so.
And it covered the most population, even though some won't be covered. They all head drop.
Yeah. The other thing that was kind of weird was, and I looked at Clint, reading a contract from the county to the county. That doesn't happen a lot, but the other thing I wanted to just mention was, and I asked this to Evan Brooks, didn't, he sent me another copy, I'm not sure he understood my question. So, on the annual rental, I didn't even know if that needed to be in here or not. Who are we going to provide any kind to? I don't have a problem with it being in there as it is, but I just thought, well, it really doesn't apply here, so that was my thoughts there. Other discussion concerning the letter of intent. For those that are listening that may not know, all six of these towers are on four hundred square feet of property. It's a twenty-by-twenty-foot footprint for a single pole, monopole tower, no guy wires. And so, as Commissioner Prince alluded to, certainly the adjoining landowners will be contacted about that. Other people may have something to say about it, but specifically, the law requires that the adjoining landowners be contacted and have an opportunity to express their opinions, so. I just thought this was probably as good an option as we had out there, really. Those others, their coverage was a lot less than what we'll get out of this sometimes, so. Further discussion? Public comment, Vern?
I'm unmuting everyone.
Thank you. Is any public comment on the agenda item of signing a letter of intent for the broadband tower site? Hearing none, we'll move on, then we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving and signing the letter of intent from the county to the county for the Rosita Broadband Tower site. Say aye.
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 Aye, motion opposed, nay. Motion carries. I don't think I have a hard copy right now, but I'll sign it, or, I think, yeah, just the chair signs it, so. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that.
Line muted.
And then.
Line unmuted.
We will, probably we need to send the, Kelly, you're gonna need a copy of that, it's, this is a letter of intent.
Anything you guys sign, I need a copy.
Okay, all right, because there's other letter of intents out there, but they're not dealing with the county, they're dealing with Site Selection Consultants, so. So, we'll get a hard copy of that, and I'll sign it, and then we can, I'm guessing we can scan that and send it electronically to Evan Brooks, and then we'll give a copy to Ms. Kelly. Thank you. Consideration of the Garden Club proposal is the next item of business. Gentlemen, we've had their presentation at a prior meeting, they were unable to be there, so we moved it to today. So, with that, I would turn the floor over to whoever is the spokesperson for the Garden Club.
Good morning. This is Amy Madden, and I represent the High Altitude Garden Club this morning, and I wanted to say briefly, I wanted to clarify a few of the things that were in the proposal for you. We have a long history with the.
You know it's your birthday, but.
Gardens on the courthouse property, since we've been maintaining them since nineteen ninety-eight. And I wanted to say, at one time, the garden areas, along the walkways especially, did have irrigation, but those existing walkway garden hoses are no longer functional or connected to any water source. The sprinklers which water the lawn areas do not reach the garden areas, and this has resulted in hand watering without the allocation of accessible hose bids, and I know you addressed that earlier, but the single accessible hose bid to us is on the north end of the front facade of the building, which requires the person watering to cross both walkways and the entire length of the building to water any of the flowering garden areas. And this was the basis of our request for an accessible hose bid and hose. So far this season, our volunteers from the Garden Club have spent eighty-five hours in the gardens preparing them for this summer growing season, and the work in the gardens remains ongoing at this time. The limited number of our membership volunteers prompted our proposal to convert the gardens adjacent to the front of the courthouse to minimal maintenance area rather than a flower garden. So, we would like for the Commission to consider the proposal that we sent to you for conversion of that area. We'd also like for the Commissioners to consider reimbursement to the club for the yearly application of mulch to the garden areas, which we find necessary for weed control and moisture retention. And I understand from the previous meeting that the Commissioners are in the process of obtaining bids for, for an irrigation system, and I would like at this moment to urge them to follow through on this with consideration to the ongoing activity and involvement of the Garden Club. And if there's anything else that I could answer for you at this time, I'd be happy to do so, and I have some other members of the club that have more longevity with these gardens available for any questions you might have.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I want to speak up because she's turned the volume down, and Carrie just stepped out, so go ahead, if you can speak louder.
I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Before we, before we actually move on your suggested approval by the Commission, I just want to tell you on behalf of all of Custer County, how much we appreciate the work that you, your organization, and all the folks involved have done, not only at the, not only at the county building, but on Main Street. You folks have been just wonderful, and I just want to tell you for the entire county how much we appreciate the work that you have done.
Well, thank you very much. We have a great deal of pride in our town, and we feel, most of us, very fortunate to live here and to be involved, and it's our way of giving back, and we especially crowd up the courthouse building and the gardens in front, and we would like to aid in any way we can to keep them working as good as possible, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome. Chair would suggest we deal with this whole proposal in two separate areas, one, obviously, the financial.
That's right.
I move that, I'm sorry. No, that's right, go ahead.
It's fine.
You're gonna take it separately, that's what you suggested, right?
Yes, I was.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Prince.
Thank you, sir. I move that we approve an additional hundred dollars for the work that has been done to maintain the beauty of the courthouse, which certainly shows the work that's been done, to three hundred dollars in lieu of the two hundred that is being suggested by the Garden Club.
Sir, second?
Second.
Moving to second it to pay the Garden Club three hundred dollars a year for their expenses for the flower beds in front of the courthouse? Discussion?
It's a good thing to do, I'm really proud of what they've done and what they're going to do, so thank you for doing it, ladies.
Yeah, we appreciate that very much. Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of the motion to pay three hundred dollars a year to offset costs for the Garden Club, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We will, I'll ask Carrie to submit a voucher for three hundred dollars. Is there a time of the year you would prefer that money, I would assume in the spring, but defer to the Garden Club?
Yes, the spring would be ideal, but we are able to cover the cost until you forward that money to us, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome, yeah, we'll, we'll generate that voucher in our office for this year, and would ask, excuse me, would ask that you invoice the county at a time of your choosing in the spring, and then we'll make sure that gets through the process.
Sounds like she's worked with the government before.
Thank you very much, we can do that for you. Thank you very much. We can do that for you, for that amount of money, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I'm gonna throw out a couple comments about the rest of the proposal, if I may, you know, before we move on, um, and, and I guess I'll ask a question of the garden club as part of that. Uh, I did speak with Ivan, the maintenance person, and, uh, he certainly is willing to take care of all of the areas indicated on the map, uh, with the exception of D, E, F, and G, and that's by direction of the garden club, they'd like to retain, uh, maintenance and planting of that area. So he said he would be willing to take care of the rest of it, and make sure that we did all the watering. So I talked to him about adding another zone or two to his sprinkling system, his above-ground system, he said he could do that at a nominal cost, and we'll make sure those flower beds get watered. Now, that, that was the discussion. Um, I guess I want to ask the garden club, uh, given a choice, would you want to continue with garden H, or would you like the county to just take care of that?
Well, we would like the county to take care of A and B. We have already, um, addressed the small area listed as garden C, so I would be very happy to work with him, but I would urge that once your irrigation system has been installed, if you choose to do so, that you might create low maintenance types of shrubbery in those.
Okay, my question was about area H, as in Henry.
I'm sorry, did you say H?
H, yes ma'am.
Is an area for, that we have a separate proposal for the commissioners at a time that irrigation might be available in that area. And it would be, again, a low maintenance area, that would involve the planting of, uh, tree, a tree perhaps, and some shrubbery and grasses that would not need the type of maintenance that the actual flowering gardens need.
Yeah, Ivan's final comment to me was to me, he said, if that's what the commissioners want to do, I'll take care of everything except D, E, F, and G. Uh, are you okay with that?
We are for the, yes.
Okay, alright. Um, yeah, we're, we're kind of in the process of determining the best route to go, uh, with irrigation, uh, so he just said, hey, if they want to do D, E, F, and G, I'll take care of the rest of it. So that was what he had said, and that's what I'm throwing out to the group, uh, to the commissioners, so, uh, if that's okay, then with you guys, I don't, I don't want to introduce a motion that's in conflict with what the garden club wants to do, but, uh, from the proposal that I read, I, I think we gleaned it out, that if you will continue to, uh, plant and maintain areas D, E, F, and G, then our maintenance person will take care of the rest of it.
Actually, well-
Uh, Commissioner Candace is asking if you are going to take care of H, or if the county was, and I thought you said you'd prefer the county to do it, and you'd be willing to assist with some planting recommendations.
Well, that, that is correct, and it will depend on how you move forward with your irrigation.
Correct, okay. Alright, thank you. So with that being said, then I would move that we, uh, enter into an informal agreement with the garden club, that they would maintain the areas adjacent to both sidewalks on the west side of the courthouse, uh, and the flower beds, and the, uh, county will be responsible for the rest of the property.
I'll second it.
We move to second it, uh, as aforementioned agreement with the garden club. Discussion? So I, my conversation with Ivan was that he will, uh, make every effort to get D, E, F, and G watered on a regular basis, along with the rest of the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of, uh, the agreement with the garden club for D, E, F, and G areas of the, uh, flower beds, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies, I appreciate that. Elaine, I look forward to meeting you in person one of these days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, thanks very much, and thanks, uh, please, Conver, thanks to all of your folks that are volunteering to do that, we help the money. Hope the money helps a little bit, I know it's not a lot. If you find that you just desperately need more, come back and talk to us.
Okay, we very much appreciate here, you hearing our case and our presentation, and thank you for that amount of money.
Uh, you're welcome. Okay, thank you, folks. Let me get back to... Okay, moving on, the next item of business, consideration of posting the job vacancy for the OEM. Um, obviously Donna gave us, uh, a draft to look at. Um, I've, I've got a recommendation I'd like to make to the commissioners, uh, doesn't have to be on a real formal basis, I don't think, but I would like to send this packet to Christie Coleman. Uh, she said that she would help us make sure we get this distributed statewide to the appropriate, um, entities. Uh, she said, you know, definitely, yeah, I just encourage the commissioners, she said, to not get blinders on and start looking at OEM from a COVID-19 perspective. She said that would be a disaster. She said, you, you've definitely got to look at plan writing, grant writing, uh, obviously, appropriate response to pandemics, and certainly to the fire, uh, issue as well, so. I haven't read it, I think it's probably, you know, like Donna said, pretty much standard what we did last time, but I would sure like to shoot this to Christie and let her vet this if you don't mind.
Yeah, I got a couple comments for you, Tom.
Okay, go ahead.
But good, good point in it. So there's two pieces to this. One is, we need to get it to Christie, there's no question about that. And then it needs to be disseminated within the OEM realm, and there's lots of contacts, and she probably have other websites for us to do that, and that's what she's going to do, I know. And so that's the point. The other piece is, we can update it as we do it, because right now, uh, we need to get it posted as soon as we can, and so, and like we talked about earlier, uh, we can get it in the papers starting today if we hustle, if, and it makes sense. This is a good write-up from the last time, I think it's okay from a paper point of view, and if we have to update it for Christie later, we can do that, or if she has some other comments for us. And then we need to get, make sure it's on our website, and I've got some comments on our website not being too user-friendly, and we need to start, uh, maybe to have a discussion with Vern, and, and figure out a better way of doing that, but right now, it needs to be on that as well. So do you want to, do we want to just, you mentioned getting it to Christie right away, that's sort of an acclamation we could disagree to, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, once we post it, then we can, we can decide where we're going to disseminate it.
Right.
Uh, so I think formally, yeah, a motion would be in order to post this vacancy notice, um, and then we could address-
Okay, so I move we post this vacancy notice at first opportunity.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second it to, uh, post the vacancy notice for the Office of Emergency Management Manager's position. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, I guess my question is, we will pay to have this put in the, uh, paper of record? Do we want it anywhere else locally?
What we can do is write it as a press release, and we can poke it, post it in both papers. Uh, normally, a press release is news, and if they would like to do it, they, they can, if they don't, that's fine. Uh, also, we haven't discussed the salary range, that you probably want to-
So to back up just a second, Commissioner Candace, so you're okay with paying for this to make sure we get it in our paper of record?
Yeah, we absolutely need to do it.
Okay, and then if we want to send it to, as a press release, to the other papers?
Yes, and a press release has some value too, because it shows up in an area that, you know, help wanted, in a help wanted section is a lousy place for a doctor to be looking to, uh, look, look for a professional job, and that, that's where you find, uh, carpenters and stuff, and cars for sale, so.
Yeah.
So that's why I think it's worth paying for, and it's also worth writing the press release.
Uh, I hope Donna's listening, I, I don't mean to, to pick, nitpick this to death, but I have conversations with her, and she said, hey, I appreciate you saying that, I never thought about that. There's something about posting a professional vacancy announcement that doesn't sit real well with me when you see it, notice, help wanted.
Right.
I'm not belittling what Donna's presented to us, I just wonder if we could change that title to vacancy announcement, Office of Emergency Manager, uh, or OEM Manager, not many people are going to know what OEM means, but I just, I hate to see that as help wanted.
That's right. How far would it, I would rather not see OEM, I'd rather see Office of Emergency Management.
I agree, yes.
Because people may not know.
Yeah, so we might make a change to that, you just put the title up here.
Here's a suggestion on that. It's, it's the Emergency Manager of, uh, Operations Director, you know, it's a, make it what it is, and so-
She's a manager.
Yeah, I think her title is manager.
I don't, we kept calling, okay, manager.
She's not the director, I think she's the manager, but we can clear that up with Donna too, so.
According to the, according to the job description, it's Emergency Management Director, that's what I thought, so.
Yeah, so, uh-
It's a manager pay level, but it's a director of that office.
Yeah, and we can reach out to Meredith too, and see what, I, I would just like to be a little more formal, that's all I'm getting at, so.
We got a straight one.
I will, I will talk to Ms. Donna about that. Um, other than that, I certainly don't have any issue, um, about posting it locally. I, you never know, I don't think we're going to get a ton of interest locally, but we might. Last time, we had one or two people, so, uh, I don't have a problem with getting it posted, uh, this week if we want, and then shoot a copy of this to Christie and-
I have a, I have a suggestion also, and, um, in discussing this, as far as the, uh, Director of the Public Health Agency goes also, there are professional sites that several people have brought to my attention. I, I think we could, we'll get some information on what that might cost, and bring that back to discuss, but that's a second step, I think, but we need to get it as widely distributed as we can.
Christie assured me that she would assist us in doing-
Yeah.
State and national.
I sure appreciate her help.
Further discussion? Public comment?
We need to talk about salary range before we post it, it's blank, yes.
No, I don't think so. Typically, the sal, if there's a salary range-
Just got to ask Donna how she posted, but it does, it is blank, she left it for us to discuss.
Can you call Donna real quick and ask her what she recommends? And I would be a little more comfortable with the salary range versus a salary.
There's a minimum requirement for exempt employee. It's 47,000 something, I don't remember the exact number.
No, it's just us. Do you want to come over and talk to them? Okay.
Want to take five, it wasn't popular?
Yeah, don't mind if, if I can see if there are no objections, just taking about a five-minute recess. Good point. I, we were in the process of discussing the OEM vacancy announcement, uh, and so we were talking about salary range. Ms. Donna, um, are you prepared to give us some recommendations about that?
And, I, I really don't. Um, the reason it was where it was is because, um, a state law had gone to the legislature to be passed, and as exempt, it had to be like 3,900 a month. Well, that legislation did not pass.
What was it before, is there a le, minimum?
Um-
That must be, because we've been posting-
The minimum now for exempt staff is, is 36,000 a year, and it might be 35,918, I didn't have time, by the time Cara called, to look up that exact number. Not to say that's where you should put it, but that-
Well, can you give us a range over what, what currently it is, where Meredith was, up the higher and lower end, you don't have to say exactly what it was. But it's okay, it's public information, isn't it?
Is it public information?
Should be.
Mm-hmm. It is, I, I posted.
All the wages, you can look up every one.
Um, I have to post it in the newspaper, and if there's only one of you, then everyone knows who that person is, so, um-
Do you have that figure with you? I look it up.
It's a little over 48.
Okay, so there's a high and low on that.
Uh, just for sake of discussion, then, do you, do you think 45 to 50 would be reasonable?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Christie has been so wonderful with us, maybe we ought to ask her what she feels for our county, our size, what other counties are paying, and we can get a feel, because I, I think we need to be competitive with other counties. I don't think we should be way high or way low.
Well, that's why, but a range ought to cover that, uh, that's, Christie had that before, and we dealt with it, and we posted it before, so that ought to be within the range. So, you know, maybe it's not 45 to 50, but maybe it's, uh, 42 to 53, I mean, pick a number.
She's the expert.
But you see, but even, even so, uh, the other counties are richer and some are poorer, so, you know, if, if they, if we hear that, uh, because, uh, El Paso County or Fremont County for that matter, Fremont County's got a lot more money to deal with than we do, a lot more people, I mean, you got to be competitive within your community too.
Or is it a four-day-a-week job, not five, where it'd be 32 instead of 40, which that three-day weekend, the pay could be, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ways to-
Right, but this is the way it was posted last time, though.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think it's okay.
Change it, but I just was under the assumption it was going to be 40 hours a week.
Me too.
Yeah, and I-
If we want to have a different conversation, that's fine.
It says that, it actually says that right in there.
Right.
That's just because this was last time, just if you were wanting a change up, I'm-
I think it's fine.
Is it a 40-hour-a-week job? I mean, does Meri, I understand that COVID is a whole different animal, but-
Not dealing with COVID.
Exclusive of COVID, is it a 40-hour-a-week job? I don't know the answer, and that's just kind of a rhetorical question, because I don't know.
Me either.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't have a real clear feel for that either, uh, the chances of Officer Emergency Management Manager being on a fire or a pandemic, can't count on that every year.
Yay.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Oh, thank you, what I count on.
The problem with going to Christie with this, it's going to hinder us trying to get this, at least, posted locally. We're going to have to wait to post it nationally and statewide, to get some feedback from Christie, but that could happen today, probably.
Get a wide enough range, we can deal with it.
Well, I didn't think we were going to put the salary in the newspaper, they would go to the website to see the job description, that's where we have the salary requirements in it. Is that what you anticipated?
Right, that's-
Have we ever posted the salary in the paper?
Is, I can put it here on, on the front, it says, uh, you know, and I can't say the word commensurate.
Commensurate, yeah.
There you go.
That's a-
Someone can get it right.
Commensurate, commensurate.
Because that's what I, what I-
But that's a good way to-
Yeah, that's a pretty good description.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, that's pretty standard procedure, is salary commensurate with upon.
Tom, I just looked, the, as of July 1 of this year, the minimum salary for a 40-hour a week is 684 dollars per week, or 35,568 per year, but that changes as of January 1, then it goes up, and each year it actually increases for exempt employees up to January 1 of 2025.
What's it go up to, just a few bucks?
Uh, well, January 1, 2024, goes up to 55,000 per year, so that's 20,000 more than it is right now.
That's a big jump.
Well, I, I would think on the, on the vacancy announcement, that we could put salary commensurate upon experience, or based on experience, don't you?
Yeah, I think on the announcement, that's appropriate, but I think if they go to the website to learn more information, they ought to get a range on that, Bill's got a good point.
Then we fill in the-
On that, on that back, because I took it out, so, um, but that may-
And while I'm thinking of it, Donna, when we get ready to post this, can you change that notice with help wanted to vacancy announcement for Office of Emergency Management Director?
No.
So you don't want it to, let that be-
I just don't want it to say notice, help wanted.
And so-
Manager, not director.
But do you want that whole- Do you want that whole, that as the headline?
Yes.
Okay.
So is it a director position, Donna? Where, it's director of Office of Emergency Management.
It's manager.
Is that the official?
It's the manager.
So it's manager.
Emergency Management Director. That's right off.
Yeah, so the second line of the posting says Director of the Office of Emergency Management.
And that's what I took it as, but my job's director and I'm referred to as like anything but that online too, so.
So would you prefer to say the manager?
Quit.
Or director?
I think director is a match.
It's the Director of the Office of Emergency Management.
I'd find that.
Could it, any input on that?
I think it's, should be Director of the Office of Emergency Management.
Right.
Because we have other directors, planning and zoning as a director, and we have the Director of Human Resources and Finance. We just don't ever call her.
Yeah, it's always like her. Um, and so I'm going to try to call the newspaper and change the Health Department one because else it's going to say.
Thank you.
Maybe it's not a public, that's great.
Director of Public Health. Director.
Do you think it said manager, Donna? For Public Health?
Uh, no, it's director.
Okay. What were you going to ask them to change? I'm sorry.
At the newspaper, it says help wanted, and I picked up that ad yesterday, and so it's going to look like.
Yeah, we got the change in there.
OEM is way more important than, than that. So they try to get it to be.
I got you. Yeah, that'd be great if you don't want to do that. So, uh, so really, we're looking at two different documents here, correct? This will be the vacancy announcement. This will be the job posting on the website.
And then I even have the, the, uh, application on there. I'm going to try to make it as easy as possible.
Okay, um, I would move that we.
You got it.
Under the pay schedule then, that we, the rate of pay salaried, uh, a range between forty-five and fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
Exactly the number I was.
That's where he started at. That's good.
Exactly, seriously.
Is it a second?
I'll second it. Let's move on.
It's been made, and moved and seconded to include in the job description a salary range of forty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Discussion? Donna, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Public comment? Uh.
Be quiet out there.
Yeah. Meredith did not call in, but she sent me a text and she said she believed it justifies forty hours a week.
Perfect. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Uh, hearing no public comment or any further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the motion, which is to include a salary range of forty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars a year. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Post nay. Motion carries.
And it was fifty-five, right?
Yes, forty-five to fifty-five.
I wrote fifty, but I thought it was.
Forty-five to fifty-five.
And then, um, the chair would entertain a motion about posting the vacancy notice with some minor changes, right? Commensurate salary will be commensurate based on.
And I'll put that when the close of it is.
Okay.
And yes, you, you already have a motion for that.
We do?
Yeah.
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 To post this?
Yes.
Did it pass?
Yes.
Haven't voted on it?
Haven't voted on it yet.
So the motion I made was totally out of order.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. We got a vote on it.
Let, one more help wanted. We need a new chairman.
Yeah. Uh, by default, gentlemen, are you okay with letting the motion we just voted on stand even though it was made out of order? Or would you like me to withdraw?
No, it's okay with me. Let's don't start over.
We drop it. It was an error. No deal.
So, uh, that motion will stand. There's a motion on the floor then about posting the vacancy notice for the office, for the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Further discussion about posting the vacancy. Uh, we'll go into the newspaper of record. Uh, we will pay them to have that posted, Ms. Donna. And then there was a request to put it in the other papers as a press release.
And I, how do I do a press release?
I, I would guess just send them and ask them if they would.
I can handle that for you.
Because last time I sent them a carbon copy of it and they asked, they said, um, it will be forty-four dollars, so I.
I would just write press release only.
I'll get it.
She's done. She boards with the tribute and we'll get it. Can you write a special relation?
We'll pay you to have it in the tribute.
Or the.
It can be a press release in the tribute too, which makes it more visible if they elect to do it.
And the Health Department as well?
Yeah.
Since we're on the second one. I mean.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Well, with due respect, the paper has a right to publish a press release or not.
Right.
They are obligated, if we give them a mock ad that we pay for, to publish that. So as long as they agree to publish a press release, I'm fine, but I'm concerned that if we say, here's a press release, and they choose not to publish it.
We have to tell them both. I agree.
Well, I agree with what you're saying. We're going to pay to put this in the paper of record. What happens after that, we don't have any control over unless we're willing to pay for it.
I fully support that now. Comment.
Okay. Uh, so the motion was to publish it in the paper of record and to send it as a press release to the other two newspapers. What they do with it is their choice.
Let's vote.
Okay. Uh, public comment? Hearing no, proceed to vote. All in favor of posting the vacancy notice for OEM, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. When I say posting, obviously I meant posting in the paper of record. Okay.
And you said I can get this in for the ninth, which is like in a minute. Okay? And so should I run it two weeks, three weeks? Still have it closed to the twenty-seventh?
I would say two weeks myself, but open for debate. I just don't think we're going to get a ton of.
We got to get.
Ton of response locally.
I'd say two. It's fine and we can always reconsider that if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
You good there, Ms. Donna?
I'm just trying to figure out my payrolls there, but if they're turning them in, um, I, I just won't be able to deal with them because I'll, I'll cut it at the twenty-second then.
Okay. And obviously, the Board of County Commissioners has the right to refuse any or all applicants, right?
Always.
Should go without saying. Okay, very good. Anything else pertaining to the OEM, uh, vacancy announcement? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming over.
Thanks, Donna. I'll stop forward a minute.
Okay.
Do you have this electronically?
What is it? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry. It's the vacancy.
I do not.
Okay.
But I can ask Donna for it.
Uh, or you can scan this, either one. We do need to send a copy of this to Christie Coleman.
Okay.
Ask her for her input.
She'll have it.
With the change that we made.
Yeah.
You'll be just get it from Donna once she.
Doesn't have to be today, but, uh, we just don't want to forget.
Yes, I will.
We get her a copy of it.
That's why she's the admin assistant. She has the memory. She's hired.
Well, at her age, at her age, I'm worried about her memory starting to fail. Mine has.
She's older.
She's got a few good years left.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
She's five years younger than I am, so it will catch up with her.
Whoa.
I'll probably have to invite her to lunch. Um, and, and to that vein then, uh, do we want to just have Christie and Meredith provide us with a list of who we, who they think we should send this to as well, or should we just ask Christie to deal with it?
Ask Christie to help work with it, so we can get it posted where she says, so we can have her talk with Donna.
I think we ought to let Christie just come back to us and say, here's what I run. And I, potentially she could say, I'll send it out on our listserv or whatever app that she has, or she may say to us, you should do the following. I'd say let's just leave it to her. She's the professional.
And I agree with what Commissioner Candace said. I'm fine with turning that over via Christie to just communicate with Donna. I don't think I need to know where it's going.
Absolutely agree with that.
Okay, all right. So I will follow up with that as well. So, uh, Kara, would you just make a note and ask Christie to communicate with Donna and Meredith and we'll get it rocking and rolling?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the other thing that Christie asked of me last night to bring to the meeting today was to express her desire to serve on the hiring committee for this position.
Perfect.
She is willing to do that as a voting member or as a, uh, non-voting member, either one.
I don't think she can be a voting member personally.
Funny, she could if we appoint her as one, but it would be up to us, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. We can just decide who is on a committee and the committee votes.
That's true, but we, we talked to the mechanics here. We're, we're elected to be representatives. We have the authority and the responsibility. You can delegate some of the responsibility, uh, or the authority for her to do that, but then that takes it out of the realm of what they are elected, why they're elected. We can have her as an advisor anytime and give us input, and that's what we've done in the past on a couple other, you know, hirings that we've had. We didn't appoint them as a voting member, but we, we got their input. This one with, uh, John Carroll, for example. You have to be careful when you delegate your, your responsibility.
I'll go either way. I, I have, I personally, I mean, I, I understand.
I don't have a problem because we're going to listen to her input and we make decisions based on, on, on data.
Uh, I'm, I'm saying, I, I fully comprehend what you're saying. You know, I personally feel, and I'm not trying to contradict you, but I personally feel we have the authority to say you're a voting member of our committee. However, you know, she's going to be a, a major influence on it because she's the expert on that, so.
Right. But you've got to pay to make the decision. I just think she's not.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Candace's perspective and, and maybe it should come down to, to the vote of the commissioners regarding the outside. Voting certainly influences, uh, and that's fine. She's fine with it either way, and so her, her desire was to be part of the process, excuse me.
I think that's great.
To make sure we were asking the right questions and so on and so forth, so I know she would be great for that. So I'll reach out to her and let her know that we would invite her to be on that. Committee is a non-voting member unless you want to take that to the vote. Okay, very good. Uh, any additional items to come forward? Yes, sir. Mr. Prince?
Mr. Chairman, you kind of alluded to this very early in the meeting this morning.
That's true. That's true.
I, I think the microphone system we have right now is not functioning well enough for what we do.
Yes.
Um, I've noticed as we all speak, these microphones click in and out, and I'm real concerned that we're not able to get public involved the way we really need to have them. I'm sorry they miss things, not on purpose, but it's electronic issues. I recommend that we ask Vern to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better solution than we have right now.
And let me comment to that.
Go ahead.
Uh, my professional experience, both in the military and in the corporations I've worked with and for, there are phone systems, Polycoms, they call them, that are very sensitive around, in a conference room. And people that dial in, hundreds of people can hear and they, they transmit very well. The reason we got these, and that's something we can have a look at. The other reason we got these phones, these mics in the first place was people in our room are having problems hearing this in the back of this room. So maybe there's some microphone system that works good in an auditorium, you know, or whatever we, we get, that is also compatible with a Polycom, and that's what we need to get Vern to.
And I'm great with whatever solution's going to solve this problem, whether it's Polycom or something else. I, I just feel we owe it to the public that we need to upgrade the system.
This system, you're specifically talking about the microphones right now, correct?
I'm talking about the microphones at the moment, but.
Scabbed into this.
Right. If Bill's solution will help the phone issue, because we stick one of these crummy microphones in front of the speaker on our phone, if there's a better solution there too, let's fix this.
Okay, yeah. Personally, I prefer a lapel mic for us, but.
We can work with it.
Yeah, I will bring that up with Vernon and, and I don't have a problem if we need to spend some more money on it. Obviously, I wrote a grant for this. It got denied, so we paid for it out of our budget, but I don't have a problem. Three thousand and some dollars, so, uh, but I wouldn't, I would support spending more money if we need to.
And it ought to be, it probably can work with some of this equipment we got on here, so it might. It's just needs to look at.
I think that was an eight-channel, uh, processor back there, so may not have to replace that.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Definitely. I think we need to do something about these microphones. You bet. Yes, ma'am.
Um, with the, the people on the phone, we bought a conference call phone, so.
Yeah, where is?
Where is it?
Yeah, I remember that now that you bring it up. It's a good point.
Yeah, it ought to be a Polycom, probably.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what a Polycom is, but we did buy a conference call.
Looks like a satellite of, of.
It was a little bigger, isn't it?
Yeah.
Seemed to help. Just a suggestion.
Uh, that money gets locked in.
Yeah, because it was back.
Where was that? Where'd that white cabinet go that was back? Or the, uh?
Was it downstairs?
Our previous administrative assistant always unlocked that and got that out when we needed it.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of.
It may be outdated, but we can take, have him take a look.
Yeah, we bought it less than a year ago.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not outdated yet. Let's get it.
It's not been very long.
We used it down at Whitmore.
Yes, we did.
Could be a Whitmore. We may have left it there because that's what we felt we were going to need it.
It's at the base of that white cabinet back there.
I, I'll bet it's a Whitmore. But that's, that's just half of the problem.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I, uh, even if we weren't teleconferencing and these mics keep cutting out, as Commissioner Candy indicated, there might be people in the back of this room couldn't hear us or in the courthouse where we were at, so, uh, I consent. I will move forward with Vernon and we'll deal with it. We've never been pleased with these microphones since the day we got them. They started doing this the first day we had it, so, I don't. But anyway, we'll, uh, we'll get some traction for that. Thank you for bringing that up. Other additional items of business?
Not for me, sir.
Commissioner, yes.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Candace.
None here.
Look to the board.
Jackie brought me this, um, thing you guys have to sign for the sons. Do you want to sign it now or in a meeting, or do you just?
How many signatures?
Three.
All three? Yeah. Let's do it now. We already voted to approve it and sign it. That was the motion, so we might as well do that today while we're here. While we're doing that, chair would open, uh, the floor to public comment if anyone is on the phone and wants to, uh, comment to the commissioners. Now would be the appropriate time. So. Yeah, we're just signing the conditions, and maybe that's all that gets signed. That's not the entire, or special use permit. It's just the conditions.
Yeah, they handle the permit. That's true.
Okay, if there's no public comment, uh, I don't believe, yes, I don't believe we have an executive session scheduled. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll vote that we adjourn.
I'll second.
And move a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. This meeting has been adjourned.